I'd like to call to order the work session for April 10th to order for the Glen County Board of Education. And we'll start with the items of information, Mr. Byfield.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and get started with Ms. Cody and a financial update.
Okay, so we'll start with the February financial report. We did not have any budget amendments in February. And then, um, our, as of February, our revenues were at eighty-one point three percent of budget. And our expenditures were at sixty-one point six percent of budget. The budget position at the end of February was sixty-six point seven percent. So we're right in line where we need to be. Any questions on the budget? Okay, so then, moving on to the February investment analysis. In February, we had interest of six hundred fifty-four thousand ninety-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. So if there are no questions on the financials, then I'll move on to the budget update. So the first thing that you have in your packet are our budget assumptions. I'm gonna go ahead though and scroll to your page three as we go through the assumptions. So, um, before I get started, I kinda just wanted to give a brief overview to the new board members, just kinda what our budget process is. So what I do is I start with the estimated beginning fund balance, which is the estimated ending balance from the prior fiscal year. Then I take the current year's revenues and add estimated increases and subtract any estimated decreases. And then I do the same with expenditures. So if we have an excess of revenues over expenditures, we'll have an increase in fund balance. And then if we have a excessive expenditures over revenues, there will be a decrease in fund balance. And some of you may notice that the revenue and expenditure amounts are slightly different than what was on the February financials. And that is because the reports that I used to build the budget are ran at the beginning of April. So that's the little bit of difference. So I estimated a four million, seven hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred dollar increase in local tax revenue at the current mileage rate of four point nine zero. I used a six percent increase in the tax digest and a ninety-seven percent collection rate to come up with that figure. We will receive additional QBE funding for the certified health insurance increase, which I estimated at one point five million. I'm hoping by the May work session, we will have our initial QBE allotment. So that will be an exact number. It won't just be an estimate. So that puts our total fiscal year twenty-six revenues at a hundred and ninety million, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. We have three mandated expenditure increases. The first is a increase of TRS of one point one-three percent. And that would be an additional cost of one million, two hundred seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars. State health insurance will increase a hundred and twenty-five dollars per month for certified staff and three hundred and five dollars per month for our classified employees. The cost increase is one million, four hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for certified and one million, six hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred for classified. So that gives our total increase for mandated expenditures, four million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. And then I will move on to the non-mandated. We have our annual salary step increases for certified at one million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. And for our non-certified or classified, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We have five new positions budgeted for next year. We have two district behavior specialists. Our two high school, in-school suspension para positions are gonna be changed to teaching positions. And then we are going to move our mental health coordinator, who is currently federally funded, into the general fund. So the total increase for that is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We have a budgeted increase for supplements of fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Those are for athletic, academic, and lead supplements. The majority of those are new supplements. We had a phase-in process for last fiscal year and, or for this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So this is the second half of that phase in. As a result of our allotment meetings, we had a decrease of six positions. It was one teacher and five paras. I did wanna point out that these were positions that were eliminated, not people. So if the position was eliminated, the people were given a job at a different school. So that was a decrease in expenditures of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then I budgeted an increase in departmental budgets of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred dollars. The majority of that increase was for our casualty and cyber insurance. We were told to expect an eighteen to twenty-five percent increase. So I budgeted on the twenty-five percent and just to keep us covered. Then the last few years, we have had a transfer to the capital outlay fund budgeted. I did eliminate that transfer for fiscal year twenty-six. And so the last item that we have are local salary and benefit increases. As you know, the last few years, we have been striving to keep our employees' salaries in the top three of the first district reses so that we stay competitive, so that we can attract and maintain highly qualified individuals. So based on a local salary study that was done comparing Glen County to other districts in our resa, our salaries have fallen out of the top three district-wide. So because of this, we're recommending a salary increase for all Glen County school employees. The cost for the increase in salary and benefits is seven million, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. So overall, our expenditures would exceed our revenues by four million, five hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. So we would be using our fund balance to offset that overage.
Any questions?
Just a couple. Will you remind me, I know we talked about being, we always say we're conservative going into the new year as we start developing the budget. But last year, what was the actual increase in the tax digest? I know we're looking at six. You remember what it was for last year, the actual?
That is the one thing I did not bring. I wanna say it was...
Was it more than six?
Oh, oh, the percentage. It was four point five.
Four point five, okay.
It was four point five, yeah.
And then the actual collection rate, we've been running ninety-eight, ninety-nine, but we talked about it slowing a little bit.
It has slowed. I did talk to the tax commissioner's office and they recommended ninety-seven, which is why I went with that.
The other thing I'd ask is that, um, with the seven point eight in salary increases, is there, and listen, I know that ninety percent of our budget is, you know, salaries and benefits. And so it's harder to cut, you know, a lot of stuff. If we, I know we got some ref positions and some things went away. But is there anywhere else that y'all have looked to try to offset eight million dollars in new expenditures for salaries and benefits? And that's just a, I mean, that's a lot not to have another lot item at least trying to offset some of that, you know? You can only cut so much paper and toilet paper and books and that sort of thing, but...
And one thing I will say too is I know in the past, we have had these operating transfers at the end of the year.
Right.
I don't really know where every, so that, that fund balance is a true estimate because I don't really know where things are gonna fall out until we end the year. So it is possible that that fund balance will be larger and that, you know, that it, that it won't be such, that we won't be cutting into the fund balance as much. That also, that estimated beginning fund balance includes us making a three million dollar operating transfer this year. So if we don't make that operating transfer, that balance would be three million dollars higher. So that, that's also an option to keep us from going into fund balances.
And to your point, salaries are a huge portion of the budget. And from a percentage standpoint, that seven point eight represents less than a five percent salary increase.
Right.
When you calculate salary, it's less than five percent.
Well, one thing I wanted to point out too...
We do have steps. I mean, and listen, we've always approved, you know, when y'all recommended that. So I'm not saying we're not gonna do that or look at it, but we do have salary steps that are built in and other things too that we look at every year. And it's just the, it's the first time I can remember in a long time. It looks like I just ran forgetting about something that we've, that we've gone over in expenditures over revenues.
Right. But one thing also to keep in mind is we have been making those operating transfers. So that's, you know, kinda...
And we do have great investments and stuff like that going. So, I mean, all that's a positive thing, but I was just curious about that.
Well, one thing I also wanted to point out is I looked back to last year just to kinda compare what the changes looked like. And so last year, we added twenty-two positions to the general fund. And we also funded that two dollar non-exent raise that eventually we, that we started out with Esser that then moved to general. So I looked last year and our, our increase to the general fund expenditures last year was eleven point eight million. So we're really seven hundred thousand under what the increase was last year.
And that salary, that seven point eight, is that exempt and non-exempt? Is that everyone?
Everybody. It's everything.
And we're looking at six point two, more than six point two of increase in revenues. But we've also been cutting our mileage rate every year too. So I think that's part of, I mean, if we're looking at keeping it the same, it's lower by a whole mill or even more than that, I think, over the last several years.
Yeah, and we know we always have the mandatory increases that we just can't help. So we start generally four or five million dollars in the pool before we even start with the mandatory health insurance and TRS increases and that sort of thing. So, I mean, that's always, starting in the negative is always hard.
Well, I think exemptions will be in, and I should have another estimate from the tax assessor by the May work session. And like I said, I'm also hoping that we'll have that initial QBE allotment number, you know, that won't be an estimate. It'll be a definite.
Okay, thank you.
And that estimated ending fund balance, is that very conservative, like the worst it could get?
Yeah, yes it is.
Okay. So that could end up being higher. And then the, you know, the local salary and benefit increase, what that will mean? Every employee is in the top three in resa?
Pretty much, yes. It's really hard because you really don't compare apples to apples, but that, that is the closest that we can get everybody. I mean, that, that, I would feel comfortable saying that most positions in the district would be in the top three.
It would be hard to jump from fifteenth to third overnight.
Right, exactly that, right.
And, you know, I like the fact that we're gonna be competitive. And, but it says a lot about the overall school system that we still have the money to do that. And, you know, by doing that, I think it'll just ultimately increase student achievement. So, so thank you.
My biggest number's been that the fund balance being twenty million. I mean, since I started on the school board, that's been a number to stick to, to be able to afford mishaps if you will. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Moving on, I believe the next is the St. Simon's change order. Yes. Okay, this is the final change order for the St. Simon's Elementary School construction and our contract with McKnight Construction. And this will close out the project, the final phase, phase five with McKnight. Once this is approved, and it is a credit back for seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars off of the contract. So it's a, it's a negative change when we're receiving the credit back from the contract. That was what was, was saved out of the contingency as we closed the project out. And this, again, this will wrap up the McKnight portion of the construction. We still have a few lingering things that we're handling in-house on the site. But this will, will take care of the McKnight contract.
Where are you putting that money? I'm just kidding.
Goes back into East Plus Four.
Next, Heywood.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The first two on the East Plus projects, of course, we have the two projects going on right now. The College Coastal Georgia Fine Arts Center, and it is progressing well. It is, you can definitely see it from Altam and Fourth Street because it is lime green, the exterior is pretty good of the building. So it's progressing well. The second East Plus project is the Board of Education Office. And as you can see, the canopy has been demoed. Now we are, have to get it sandblasted. And we are waiting because that's gonna have to be done outside of business hours because of the mess that it's gonna make with the sandblasting. And then on Wing Three, they are moving along very well. All the metal studs are in place. And all of the offices are all separated out and the office spaces are done. So they're moving along well with that. With our, I'm sorry, those were our local capital, uh, local capital outlay funded projects. Now we'll move on to the East Plus projects, which is the BHS Field House. They begin work on Monday with the footers and the foundation. And they should be pouring the footers sometime next week for the field house. And then the new Glendale Elementary School, the RFP for the site clearing has already been out. And I will be coming back looking for a approval for the GMP for the site clearing on that at the May board meeting. Now we'll move on to the Goode Report. And we'll look at, and as you can see, for the month of March, we have taken in sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred, ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents, which is off of residuals. So that is very good, a lot more than expected. And you can see that in comparison to the previous months. And then, lastly, I'm requesting that the board approve for the installation and the purchasing of new fire panel and detection devices for the Goodyear Elementary School through ASG Associated Systems of Georgia in the amount of sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. This is the same system that we did over the last summer at Greer. Just parts are becoming hard to find in that old system and becoming obsolete. So, but the good thing, we will be able to use those parts to, if we have issues at the old Glendale, well, Glendale, until we build the new school, we'll be able to use those parts from there. So sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars is what it will cost to redo the system at Goodyear Elementary. And that is all I have.
I have a question for you. Do we have an updated estimated completion date on the field house work?
It's about a ten-month project.
From now, okay.
From now, yes.
Okay.
It's about a ten-month project and we'll work around the football team as best we can and when they come summer and football season. But it's about a ten-month project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move to Mr. Benson.
Good evening. Believe it or not, the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is right around the corner. We are preparing for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So as part of that, we have a request tonight to renew the Incident IQ software. This is our technology software that we use to handle things like technology requests. So if you're having an issue with your computer or you can't access a website, you put in a ticket and technicians will come out and take care of that. This is also the software that we use for maintenance requests. A lot of our inventories at our schools, our Chromebooks, those types of things are all handled through this software. So Incident IQ is part of the state purchasing contract. And so we are requesting that we renew this for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Any questions? Mr. Orson.
So speaking on the weight room addition that Mr. Hagel was just speaking of, we are asking the board to approve the weight room equipment. This would equip the entire field house with, we're basically increasing a lot in size. So now we will be able to fit ninety-six stations in this new field house, which is comparable to what Glen Academy currently has. So the current cost for this would be three hundred forty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-five. And that's everything from the metal, all the way to the bands, to the kettlebells, to the jump boxes. Everything's included in that price.
When did we last, I feel like it wasn't long ago that we did this. Or is it, I've just been here too long. We didn't redo the weight room. We placed, we placed some additional weight equipment on the stage.
Yeah, we did a bunch on the stage.
For the baseball and, and I guess basketball, other teams.
We purchased them at GA.
And we did purchase the DA, the new weight room at GA. We purchased that.
So basically, right now Glen Academy has three weight rooms and Brunswick has two. And this will put both schools at the exact same number and with comparable facilities at both. And the attachment's basically just the quote from the company for the three hundred forty-six thousand with details on everything you're getting.
Ms. Miller.
So I am requesting tonight funds to complete the, well, not the installation, but to complete the purchase of classroom cameras for elementary schools. So this would include, this, this total of a million, two thousand seventy would be to purchase cameras for every elementary classroom that we have, as well as faces pre-K, with the exception of Glendale Elementary. We're gonna hold off on Glendale and see what the projected completion date is on Glendale. And if it's not too far out, we're just gonna put cameras at the new school and not at the current site. But that would include, that, that completes the purchase of all classroom cameras K through twelve at this point. And we'll be using East Plus Three, interestingly, to pay for this.
Did you say pre-K through?
Pre-K through.
Does this give us cameras in all the classrooms?
Yes, with sound. This will be cameras with audio that goes along with them.
And it's the cameras that are, not only can be used like, you know, for security purposes, but they also have the instructional components where the teachers can, can view the smartboard and they can replay it, you know, for students that are absent or may not be, be able to attend school.
Is it just cameras or the additional servers and storage space and that sort of thing included?
Not included on this quote, there's not. There will be some additional wiring and installation costs that we're doing through a company with NSC, and we're getting quotes for that now by school. We're starting at Altam with installation on cameras.
Do you estimate by the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year that they'll be in place or?
Probably more like Christmas.
Okay.
Up and running.
Because I'm sure there's lead time for them. Okay, thank you.
Is that right, four, is it four hundred and sixty cameras? You know, I'm just gonna read at the start of the document. How many cameras?
Oh, I'm sorry. Four hundred and sixty cameras.
And then, and then there's also mounts that are associated with this.
New Glendale, is this type of stuff just gonna be in the package at the start?
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll...
We don't have to come back and add these type things later, right?
No, they will be installed during the construction, yes. It may not, it probably will not fall underneath the construction contract.
Okay.
We will do, but it will be handled at the same time, same as we do the intercom or the fire panel and those types of things.
And just so the board knows, these, we've had a lot of positive feedback from teachers about the cameras in their classrooms. The middle school teachers and the high school teachers have really enjoyed them being in there. They have complete control of when the cameras come on, when the cameras come off. So if it's their planning period and they don't want the cameras on during their lunch or planning period, they, they set the schedule for the cameras. So as long as there's students in the room, the expectation is the cameras are, are on and recording. But if there's no students in the room, then they can certainly turn the cameras off at that time.
Can they turn the cameras off when the students are in the room?
They could, but that's not our, our policy. Our, our protocols are for the cameras to be on if students are present.
And if they do turn it off?
We have a security stream...
We have a security stream running in the background that we would pick up the footage.
Just making sure, because if they get mad at a student and don't want it recorded. I'm not saying they would do that, but you can't tell me that's not going to happen.
We have access to it. Yep.
Because I could see that. You got to look at what people think too.
Any other questions? Complete your report.
All right, uh, that brings us down to executive session. Right now I think we have land, personnel, tribunal. Do we have anything else? I entertain a motion to go into executive session for land, personnel, and tribunal. Motion by Mr. Dodgen.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. And it's unanimous at five twenty-six.
Want to go back into open session?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lee, second by Mr. Halsey. All in favor?
Are.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to just make a comment to the public that as of right now, we have not made a decision about appointing the District Five -- four, I'm sorry, District Five board member. What we're going to try to do is narrow it down to two or three over this next weekend. And then on Tuesday, we'll have two or three names and then we'll go into deliberations. We may even have an interview process, a special called Board Meeting. So with that said, entertaining motion to go or to adjourn.
To go home.
To go home.
To go home.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Halsey to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sams. All in favor? And we adjourn.